Test. All right. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. I know it's an off Monday and I really appreciate all the members of the planning board, our solicitors, Ms. Sabo, Jim Tierney, Sarah, all for being here this evening. This is a work session between the town council and the planning board to review ordinance section 7.23 regarding student occupied dwellings in a R10, R10A, or R20 zone. And this is a work session that I put on the agenda because I felt it was important for Narragansett residents who had a lot of different questions about the enforcement of the three student, as well as the town council having received a letter from the American Civil Liberties Union regarding opposition to the three student ordinance on record, that it was important for us as a council to get in front of the planning board, review a lot of the questions that we have, and take the opportunity to, you know, hear from you guys as well. Before we get started, though, I do want to address one big question, and that's regarding the enforcement of the three student ordinance. One of our, on our, let me start over here. I did write this down, so I wouldn't mess up in how I go about describing this. "One of our first executive sessions as a newly-elected town council, former town solicitor Mark Davis advised us to not enforce the three student ordinance, or else the town would likely be sued. As this was a discussion and a determination that happened during executive session, I and the rest of the town council have been limited in what it is that we could or could not say, and how we can go about answering this question when it was presented to us. Since this is a question that has been asked for us for a while now, I thought it was important that it would get shared." Due to ongoing litigation on the enforcement of this ordinance, however, that is all I will say on this topic. I will also add that before the discussion was made in executive session, Solicitor Davis did recommend to Councillor Jim Durkin to recuse himself from executive session, and he did recuse himself and leave the room when recommended to do so. In addition to that, I think it's important to acknowledge how we got here, how the student ordinance came to be. I'm not going to go through the whole historical timeline, even though I love numbers and data, but I think the most important thing is to acknowledge that there was a problem, and there is an ongoing problem when it comes to rowdiness, transience, you know, different issues that have come up for like parties, rowdiness with students, but there are ways in which those are getting addressed. And I think it's important that when looking at our ordinances moving forward, whether it's the three student ordinance or the short-term rental ordinance, which we've already started having a work, work sessions on, that we take these issues into consideration. But I also want to remind everyone that such rowdiness and partying is not exclusive to students, that people like me, you know, I can be a good time, I think, sometimes, but then there's, you know, residents who have been here year-round, who will have their moments of opportunity as well to kind of get a little out of control. I think the most important thing here is, though, that we need to do, we recognize that there's a problem, and we want to fix it, and we want to address that with how we go about enforcement of our ordinances moving forward. We have met with URI already previously as a town council, and I think we are due to have another. We are delighted, we were delighted to have President Parlanj present at a town council meeting earlier this year, where he shared how they were building more dormitories, which I think is essential to retaining students on the campus, as well as figuring out ways in which we can better welcome students into our community as well, and student housing for graduate and undergraduate students. I believe that it will be a collaborative effort to address those concerns, but most importantly, enforcement. We have to figure out ways in which we can work together to create ordinances that can be enforced. I think that's exceptionally important, especially how we go about vetting the language in all of our amendments and all ordinances that we create. When the three student ordinance was created and voted on, and I do want to remind everyone here, present, that when we collectively sent over thirteen or fourteen zoning ordinances, proposed zoning ordinances, that that recommendation at the time was based on reviewing our ordinances that we had on record, and to figure out ways in which we could better align ourselves with the state. As a reminder, those proposals for those ordinances are not being considered. This is completely separate, based on the questions that we've been received, either via email or during the public hearing about enforcement. So I thought it was important to schedule this meeting with you guys. And again, I think, if you don't mind, I'll go into some of the questions that I had from the binder, particularly when it was originally reviewed. Back in November 20th, 2023, this planning board sent an email to the previous town council. The former chair of the planning board, Terry Fleming, in his memo noted that only six and a half percent of the entire housing stock in Narragansett had five bedrooms or more. "So in terms of actual household size, the Narragansett average hovered between 2.3 and 2.6 individuals per household for 40 years." This was Mr. Fleming's exact words in his memo. So to me, that was, that was an interesting little tidbit of information. In addition, in his June 29th, 2023 memo to the town council, the planning board was split in a two-two vote on any recommendation to amend the student ordinance down to three. To quote on page seven of this memo from Mr. Fleming, "Three of the members cited inadequacies of the draft language to provide definitive criteria to determine compliance or non-compliance. The chair reiterated his objection to the maximum standard of three students, where the town's unrelated household regulation was based on four individuals at the time." Just as a reminder to the town, we have now since updated that, based on the planning board's recommendation as well, to five, to align with the state. He felt that it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, due to the disparity of the numerical standards and the application to different zones. He expressed his position that this ordinance is also redundant of the regulatory intent of the four unrelated ordinance at the time. If it has to be adopted, he expressed his support for bringing the two ordinances into numerical and zone conformance, with his preference to institute a common standard of a four unrelated, four-student limit, as that would align with the state law. Mr. Dr. O'Neill, excuse me, also is mentioned having expressed concern for the need to have a significant penalty in place to discourage renting to problematic groups of any size. And then the motion eventually failed in a split vote by the planning board, and it was sent back to the town council for their consideration without any specific recommendation. So, again, I'm here because, again, as I was reviewing the memo that Mr. Fleming, on behalf of the planning board, sent over to the town council at the time, realizing that the planning board was undecided, but I thought that there was some very strong viewpoints shared by Mr. Fleming in this memo, and I think it applies to today as well. There's also a lawsuit on record that was referenced to the federal Hill case in Providence, where, but I think it's important to note that that case, that was decided at that point in time, there was, there was a, that was decided before the new state law went into effect at the end of June 2024. So with that long-winded recap, and I apologize for dragging, it is, it's kind of helps to really just bring, bring me full circle here, to kind of try to figure out if any of your opinions have changed on this matter since that conversation, and I do want to take the opportunity to listen to our solicitors. Maybe it's, maybe it'll be good to hear from our solicitors as well, first, to see if they have a consensus on the student ordinance that's currently on our books. But, you know, actually, if you wouldn't mind, solicitors, and I don't know which, which one to address, would you mind providing us, I think it was very important for the planning board and the town council to be present in the same room, to receive the same legal advice, legal interpretation from the state law, based on what the student ordinance says that we have on the books, and whether or not you think it complies?
Sure, happy to, for the real Nicholas Alitro, town solicitor. Mark got me thinking about it. He's the one who sent me a question to prompt some analysis into it. But as far as background, Alex, you touched on, you, excuse me, touched on much of it. State law changed in June 2024. For a number of years, we had a definition of household. The definition, the old definition, if you will, set a maximum number of unrelated people who can live together at three. That changed in June 2024. And the definition, although somewhat convoluted, we can work through it, basically says, "The maximum number of unrelated persons that can live together, that can be restricted or governed by a municipality, cannot be less than one per bedroom, and cannot exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling." So two standards. Can't be less than one per bedroom, cannot exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling. So that begs the question, does that affect our student ordinance? And I guess the classic lawyer answer is it can. There are circumstances in which that would be in conflict with state law. On my, right over here, I was thinking of an example. If you have a four-bedroom house occupied by students, that would be allowed by state law. However, it would be prohibited by town ordinance. You'd have a direct conflict there. So there are factual scenarios in which the town ordinance can conflict with what is allowed by state law. And that's, I think, part of the reason why we're having this discussion, to get ourselves consistent with state law, avoid litigation, and move forward, put these issues behind the town to assist the town. So I hope that that's helpful. So there are certain, to answer your question, Mr. President, there are circumstances in which your student ordinance could conflict with state law.
Thank you. Before, yes.
Sure.
Thank you. And, and don't apologize for your talk, because this is complicated. And this really comes down to policy and what the council decides they want to do and, and their vision of things, and it's, it's complicated. There's a misconception on state law, and thank you for stating what the state law is, because people state it wrong. People say that it says, "One per bedroom, a max of five." State law is explicit. I don't know if it was intentional, but it says, "No less than one per bedroom, a max of five." So, updated figures from the one Terry had submitted to you. The town has 783 four-bedroom homes, rentals. It has 1,917 three-bedrooms. Under state law, if you implement it, all of those are five people. Okay? Now, that's a significant benefit, because if you just look at the three bedrooms, that's about $30 million a year into the student rental industry in Narragansett. It also gets around our special permit for five, parking for five, because if you go beyond four bedrooms, you need a special permit to park. Well, you're not adding bedrooms. You're just putting five people in a three-bedroom house, or in a one-bedroom house, if you wanted to. Now, the town council looked at that law and adopted for Narragansett a different approach. You adopted no more than one per bedroom, a max of five. So then the question becomes, what do you want to do with students? Are you going to use, go with the state law, which allow one through four bedrooms to become five, five resident homes? Okay? Or you stay with the towns and strictly adhere to one per room, or do you do something other, four or three? Now, the problem I have with the state, especially in a rental situation, is if I'm a landlord, and a number of people on the council are, some have family and stuff, and some of us sitting around this table are landlords and have families, no less than one per bedroom. If I have a three-bedroom house, and I want to keep one room for myself, I'm in violation of the state law, because I have to rent all three of those bedrooms. So this is, this is not, just even on a, on a policy-wide of three, four, five people, it's, it's complicated. You start getting down to the laws, and it gets really complicated. You know, and as I said, if you look at the bedrooms, this becomes significant. And if you start to look at universities across the country, and I did way too much research on this, most state universities house less than 30% of their students. We house more students than University of Rhode Island houses. Think about that. All right? Their polit, their, their plan, from what I've seen, the strategic plan, what little I have, is they're going to add 700 net bedrooms, net beds by 2023, and Tom, 2035 or 37? Yeah, 2039, seven. Today's enrollment, if it doesn't grow. So this isn't an issue that's going to go away. We have, it's an industry. And in fact, I didn't realize, there are websites that advise people on investing in student housing. It was, it was education. If I wasn't at my age, I would start writing checks. But it is the fifth hottest industry in the United States right now, student rentals. So there are going to be pressures that aren't going to go away. And so I think when we start talking about state law, we need to understand really what we're talking about. The state law does not say, "One per bedroom, a max of five." It says, "No less than one." So that means anything from a one to a four-bedroom can house five students. Now, the town says, "No more than one," so it is stricter. It states, "No more than one per bedroom, a max of five." So, so a three-bedroom house would remain three students, basically what you were saying.
I'm just trying to, if you don't mind, if I just, I don't think we're arguing the con, or at least from where my perspective is, it's not the interpretation of the one per bedroom up to five or, or that aspect of it. It's simply student versus unrelated.
Yeah.
And for me, it's hard for me to understand that when the legal interpretation of the three student went into effect, the state law didn't exist, as you know. Then, fast forward to June 2024, now there is a state law that applies to and defines an unrelated person. So...
But there is no state law that defines student housing.
Correct. But, so then who are we to...
I'm just throwing it on the table. That's what I'm saying. This is not, this is not a simple thing.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to, like, again, I recognize the problem, but I don't know legally what gives us the right to define a specific ordinance for a group of people to say that you're three unrelated persons, but because you're students, the state law does not apply to you. I don't know if we were challenged again, if this would survive a legal battle. And again, this was recommended by former town solicitor Mark Davis at the time, and we've heard both, at least one of our solicitors, confirm that they don't believe that this is as compliant or as close to the state as we could. And it's not the number. I want to be very clear. This is specifically the difference between a student and an unrelated person. And I'm just going to use this as an example. If I was a resident here, as I am, born and raised here for 30 years, and it's a brutal housing market out there, especially here in Narragansett, and I recognize that, if I wanted to pursue, if I want, if I had two other, I'm sorry, three other friends of mine that wanted to rent with me, to defer the costs down, if I decided to pursue a graduate degree with a friend of mine, we would not be able, under this ordinance, we would not be able to rent together, because we would be in violation of the student ordinance. However, if I chose not to pursue my education, then we would get a cheaper rent here in town. So when it comes to the fair treatment of all individuals and all residents, I find it a little difficult to believe that because of the state law that went into effect in June of last year, that we would win in court because we, as a town, decided to single out this group of individuals in our town. And again, to echo former Planning Board Chair, Terry Fleming, excuse me, enforcement is exceptionally challenging. And when you have two conflicting laws, the ordinance that we would have on the book currently with the students, that says something completely different to the unrelated individuals in this town, I find it really challenging to tell somebody that you two cannot rent together, or you four, excuse me, you four can't rent together, because you four are pursuing additional educational opportunities, because we define a student as such. So again, that's, I'm sharing this as my perspective, because I respect all of you, and I, I'm very interested in hearing your feedback on this.
But that wasn't, that wasn't the, hold on a second. That wasn't the question that was asked, so I wanted to clarify that question. So just under- So just understand, careful when you start talking about state law and what it actually says. That's what I want to clarify there. That's a separate question, and it's a big debate. And I question how far we can go because there is outstanding litigation. So, Tom?
I, I just want to go back to the president's suggestion. I'd like to hear from Mr. Craven on the same issue.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing.
Your question, Tom, is?
The question is, is the three-student ordinance, as it's currently written, and observed here and in Providence, is it still good law? Has it been, has it been tested?
No.
Okay. And is it based on a, what would, leave aside the specifics right now, but a sound legal rationale for creating a quote-unquote protected class or special class of, of residents that are treated in a little different way?
Well, Judge Lanfier was the only judge that spoke to this issue in a decision. And he went right to the issue of, he wanted to know whether it was clear and unambiguous. And I, I wear two hats here, a lawyer and a legislator. And my prefer, my preference would be to advise you that if you believe that there are scenarios, you just indicated one, Mr. Chair, parking spaces, that's an issue. I know I spent a year in Bonnet Shores and parking spaces, when I was a student, and parking spaces were an, were an issue on the street, et cetera. If that is a consideration that you want state law to reflect, the first way you should go before you get sued is to say, how about if we ask the General Assembly to address it? And if they say, they make it more clear that they don't care about parking spaces or more clear that they do and accommodate and change the law as opposed to allowing the court system, which you pay for when you're sued, by paying lawyers to, to litigate those issues. There's nothing that would be any more or any less useful to you than a court's decision, which can be challenged to the Supreme Court, and a definitive answer from the General Assembly that this is the law that we feel as though we, we interpret it this way in light of the questions that you've offered to us that is taking place on both sides of this table. As a litigator for 42 years, I have found that most cases of this nature can be figured out by trying to figure out what is the General, General Assembly intended. And in the absence of language that is clear, based on factual situations, I'll always ask you, tell me the facts and I'll tell you what I think the law is. But if you don't tell me what the facts are, then I can't make a rational decision on something that may or may not be ambiguous, but if it is ambiguous, which way the court would rule? So what I'm trying to tell you is, it is clear that the General Assembly has, has not, you know, nobody has litigated the question, so to speak, of three, three students. That's still an open question. It's going to go to court and it'll be decided one way or the other. I think Nick told me that we were served a few days ago with a test case. And maybe that's the way to go. Let the courts make a decision. Sarah Taft Carter is over there. She's dealt with this issue before. Maybe she'll deal with it again. Or wait till January and let the General Assembly, in the, in the context of having your, your representatives and senators from Narragansett, you have several, put together a bill or package of bills or a single bill and say to the General Assembly, there's some ambiguity here in this, we're worried about parking spaces. We do have health, safety, and welfare powers that were given to us, us being Narragansett, through the charter that you received, so the Home Rule Charter. So we, we want to know, which, which way do you want us to go? Which way do you decide? Or is there a mandate?
So just, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Craven, and I appreciate the same from you. Sorry, Mr. Salito. So my takeaway from that is there is not clarity at this moment in time of what trumps what with respect to the two outstanding laws.
The court would trump the ordinance, and the legislature could trump the ordinance, but in the instance of it being ambiguous and there are other factors to be considered, I would say it hasn't yet. Thank you.
Would, would you mind if I just jump in quickly? I'm sorry, and I don't mean to derail the whole thing. I just wanted to talk about your example from earlier. You actually wouldn't be in violation because you can't rent your house to yourself with two people. You'd be taking on borders, and we already have a border, you'd have two borders, which is the maximum you're allowed in town, unless you're going to sign the lease with the people, which will make it pretty difficult for you to evict them, so I don't think you would do that. But I, I just wanted to explain, for anybody who's listening, if you're planning on renting out your house to students or otherwise, and you're going to live in it with them, you're actually taking on borders, it falls under a different ordinance.
That wasn't my example at all.
You said you're going to rent.
If, if I'm going to rent my three-bedroom house, if you enact it based on the state definition of unrelated, no less than one. So I, I, I live in Providence, I have a home down here, I want to rent it. We need to all understand that what the law says is that if I have a three-bedroom house, I can put five students in that house because it says no less than one per bedroom.
I'm sorry, I thought you were in one of the bedrooms.
No.
That would make you taking on borders. Okay, I understand.
I lived with three kids.
I was confused because I thought you said you were in a bedroom and that would make it.
And I said, the weird part of the way it's worded is, if I have a three-bedroom house and I say, you know what, I just want to use one of the bedrooms for storage or I don't want to rent it, I just want two kids because three are a pain in the neck, the law says you must have no less than one per bedroom. So I would be obliged to rent all three, so.
So Steve, I, I heard exactly that from you as well, that you gave a, a direction that if you were living there, somehow, that's what you said, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I just wanted people listening to understand that if you're subletting rooms, you can only let two, you can't let four or five or whatever.
If I wasn't clear, I apologize.
And Alex, just to be clear, so I mean, because this has been, I think I sent a few questions to you when you initially wrote out. Student, three-student is not being enforced, correct?
Correct. For the reasons stated.
It's not, it has not been enforced since the beginning of, since you guys took over? Or January or sometime later?
I don't know the context. I only know the point in time in which we took office. Mr. Tierney can comment if there was any time before us that the three-student wasn't enforced. I only know from the point in time in which we had the discussion with Mr. Davis.
And I just want to. It was in December.
December, okay, thank you.
I just throw this in just for a second. And since we got that advice from our old solicitor, my concern has always been, we should have something in place, which is why I want to try to get something in place. And to me, it makes sense to, maybe the state law says less than, more than one, less than one up to five. I don't want five people in a three-bedroom house, certainly. I want one per bedroom up to five bedrooms. That's what I want. And that's where I stand. So that's where I'm thinking.
Can, can I ask a question?
No.
Okay.
No. Yes, please.
So my, my understanding, and I may be incorrect in this, but my understanding is that if you have a four-bedroom house and you only want to rent three bedrooms, you can do that. You can't rent more than four bedrooms, but if you want to hold one bedroom back for yourself, you don't have to rent. You are still in compliance. It's not like you're being, if I have a three-bedroom, I have to rent to three students.
If, if you read the state law, unrelated, and you're applying unrelated to student, okay? And I'm not taking a stand on this, by the way, guys. I'm just pointing out, we need to understand what, what words we're using here. The law is explicit, and both councils will tell you because we've reviewed this. It states that no less than one person per bedroom, a max of five to the household.
I think it says at least one per bedroom. So I think that meaning that you put one, you, you can, you can't pull back and say, okay, well, you have four bedrooms, but we, we're only going to let you use three. It says at least, so you have, you can do at least one in each bedroom, up to four. But if you don't want to do four, you can just put three people in. I, I believe that's what, that's how I saw the at least.
I believe you could put one person in. I don't think it's forcing you to rent to five people.
Well, I prefer to counsel because we've discussed this before and I've discussed it with the state of the, with lawyers for statewide planning, and I've discussed it with lawyers of the state house. Their interpretation was, first off, holy cow, because they didn't, they just assumed it said one per bedroom, a max of five. It says no less than one. So am I obliged to meet the law and have no less than one person in my bedroom, per bedroom, in my home? And I leave it to both councils.
I can read, we'll read directly from the state law. This is related to unrelated persons living together. The maximum number may be set by local ordinance. But this maximum number shall not be less than one person per bedroom and shall not exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling. So shall not be less than one per bedroom and shall not exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling.
Okay. And I, not to, again, just bring it full circle here, we can argue semantics, you know, the lawyers and the legislators are, you know, there's, there's differences of opinion and perspective on that alone. But if, again, if I'm just sitting here and we're just talking as a, you know, just between our groups, again, it comes back to students versus the unrelated and the semantics and how it's being portrayed here. You, as the Planning Board, presented to the town council your recommendation to, in order, and, and I want to just add that this was even before that we even came aboard, that you guys were working on this for quite some time to better align ourselves with the state. And I think you guys did a great job. And in one of those recommendations, it was the language that you've described about the unrelated, which this council did adopt. For me, it comes down to, you are providing, you all sent over this recommendation for the town to align to that definition. But where does the line get crossed when it comes to saying, this ordinance that we're recommending be applied to this town applies to all except you, all of this group of people who are renting here because you're students? And it's not defined, it's not defined by age. You could have a 40-year-old student living with a couple other in the same age group, challenging the same market, the lack of affordable housing options that we have here in town. But I guess I, I'm seeing conflict in the recommendations coming from the Planning Board here as well.
I don't think we've made any recommendations here.
Oh, no, 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 let me be clear. Not on this particular ordinance.
And I presented the same arguments that you're presenting now.
Oh, I understand. But you can see the, how difficult it is to.
But if you're going to apply an ordinance, and I think we got to, we got to crawl before we walk and walk before we run.
Sure.
If you're going to apply an ordinance, if you're applying, and let's assume that it's decision, the policy decision to apply unrelated consistently to students, okay? And that's separate from the discussion. The question is, which one? If you apply the state, a lawyer can argue that for landlord, I can put five people in this three-bedroom house. If you apply the town's adoption, which says no more than one, okay? No more than one per bedroom, a max of five, then what Donna was saying would be totally accurate.
So let me just be clear on that.
So that's all I.
No, I, I appreciate that.
We got to figure out, what, what ordinance are you going to apply?
Right, exactly. And I think that's the challenge here.
And then you decide, how are you going to apply that?
What I would say is, and again, I'm not stating any opinion on this one shape or form, that I, this is conversational, but we, we took in the recommendation on the unrelated.
Yep.
To be applied to all of Narragansett, and this council voted on it, they approved it. Because we have a student ordinance on the books that does not align to that particular ordinance, I guess I'm conflicted in understanding how we can possibly enforce both. I would be so inclined to agree with Mr. Fleming at the time that these really should be merged to be one unrelated because of the vetting that's been done. And you even came to us and said you guys vetted it for over a year. I know because I was surprised as to how long it took, but I appreciate all the work that you guys did to review it because, and here we are again, new state laws, trying to get everything codified into our own ordinances. It's an, it's a thankless job, I think, to be a Planning Board member. And I appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
So, so I just want to say to all of you.
Yeah.
I remember the first lacrosse game I played for the University of Rhode Island, and I got knocked on my butt. And the guy leaned over to me and said, welcome to college lacrosse, welcome to policy development. So first step is to decide which one of those ordinances you want to apply, okay? And the second one, where you start to get into the difficult part, is policy. And, and from the policy perspective, what do you want to do? What do you want to encourage? All right? You said that your goals were to encourage affordable housing. You wanted to protect seniors from escalating costs. I mean, if you look at it, if you bought a home in 1975, which, God, I wish I had, you know, when you pay $50,000, on straight inflation, that house is $220,000 today, and you should be paying taxes on $220,000. Seniors are paying taxes on $800 to a million-dollar home. So, and that, depending on market pressures, that could increase. You want to bring families in. So the question is, what do you want to do and how do you shape a policy? Okay? And I hear your perspective, and it's valid, of saying, okay, we, we need to apply it to everybody, including students. And, you know, council has said, there's a debate, although I still don't understand, did the judge say that students were unprotected group or not a protected group or whatever? But that said, if you want to apply it to the board across, okay, great, that's, that's good. How do you put together a good policy? And then the question is, and when you really need to step back, and, and when I was going through my master's program, which lasted two years and a nightmare of exams and everything, and my friends got out of their MBA in, in a year and a half, the thing I took away from it and really set me for life versus other disciplines that would put another thought process in, is when you get it done, you need to step, step back and say, okay, I, I've solved this problem, I think. What other problems have I created? And that's the key thing. And that's why I'm saying, this is, one, this is policy, okay? And, and you have to create that policy. You, you have the vision, you have the direction, you have the authority to do that. Question is, what do you want to do with it? What do you want to encourage? Equality across the board? Great, okay? Don't disagree with that. So then what, then you need to step back and look, okay, what are the implications and impact of doing that? Do we put pressures on housing markets? One of the things I learned from these websites, and one of the things I, I searched for was, you know, if, if you put more students into a property, if you legally, forget how I did, if you legally increase the number of students into a home, do you decrease the number of rentals? Because people have said, well, if you put more students in a house, then there's less demand for other houses. Okay. And cities have done that. They've, legally, the way they did it was create overlay districts, and they put them in more densely developed areas, commercial, industrial, near highways, and things like that. But one of the things that, across the board, these, these consulting, these investment companies that are reckoning rendition, is they say that you need to target markets where they have allowed more students per dwelling because that's lucrative. Now, we can debate that, and I'm not. I'm just saying, these are the things you need to look at. Do you create more demand because people assume I can make more money?
Excuse me?
Inadvertently. And these are the inadvertent stuff, you know? Inadvertently. And these are the inadvertent stuff, you know?
And, and, and I think.
And that's what I'm saying. This is not easy.
We're going to do as, as a council, that's why we're here, to talk with you and work with our solicitors.
Yeah.
So I appreciate all your insight and I appreciate everything that you have to say. And it's, it's not short of what we've already talked about, you know, what we're thinking about, what I've talked to the solicitors about. And so I just think that, I thank you very much for your input.
It's not gonna be easy, guys.
I mean, I'm gonna add to that.
No, Donna, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I know, I just, I just feel like you're lecturing me.
No, 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 not at all.
I honestly, I mean, I.
I'm feeling for you because this is not just.
Conversational.
How do we define five, five, five people in a house? It's not that. That's the easy part.
I appreciate everything you said. I truly, truly do.
And I just.
But it's not short of things that I've already thought about and that I've talked to.
We're just putting everything out on the table.
No, thank you. And any input you have on this topic would be wonderful. I mean, that, I would appreciate that very much.
And I appreciate, again, the planning board's time and effort to review all of the, again, those, the binder here, the, the new bible that I carry around with me. And you, I, I don't know who's responsible for having put together the historical memos and everything. But I really appreciate the one-stop shop of being able to go in here and look through just the history of how this ordinance came to be and what was the latest in the communications that were sent over from the planning board to the town council. And again, for me, you know, this, this is one particular ordinance. There's a lot of ordinances on our book, but the mission collectively between the town council, planning board, and in everything that we do, needs to be to figure out ways to support more affordable housing options and affordable properties. We have ordinances on our books right now. We are looking at an all-time unaffordable market right now. And I'm not saying that changing one ordinance is going to wave a magic wand and overnight we're going to have affordable housing. That's not going to happen, to be quite unfortunate to the rest of the council and residents, that, you know, our mission is to support affordable housing initiatives. But not one of these ordinances is going to solve that problem overnight. That the market is in such greater demand for affordable properties anywhere, let alone just how wonderful and marketable Narragansett is. I think, again, I know we're talking and I want to keep the conversation only to the three student ordinance here and be mindful of everyone's time. But for me, I think this goes beyond this one particular ordinance. I think we need to look at the regulation of rentals as a whole. You know, one thing that we're working on, which I'd like to get back into the discussion, is the short-term rental ordinance. I think we had made some great progress in previous workshops and work sessions that it would be good to have, pick that up where we left off. Because I think regulating rentals, enforcement, holding, holding people accountable, that's really the root cause of this problem. It's, and I, and I want to be very clear, I completely understand why this ordinance came to be when it did. But the reality is too, there was no state law on the books at the time in which it was considered. To, to this language, I should specify. And like, you're right, there was a state law, but it was, it was three. Yeah, thank you.
Tom? So, yeah, so I think you ask yourself the following question. In terms of three, five, whatever the number might be, and you put it in the following context. There are six to eight thousand University of Rhode Island students living in Narragansett. That estimate comes from the university itself. There are fourteen to fifteen thousand people in Narragansett. The question is, and what impact does that have on the market? And then the next question is, okay, do you want to encourage more? Do you want to keep it the same from a policy perspective? Do you think it needs to change? And if so, how? How would this particular ordinance, however it's structured, advance that, to your point? It's not, there's no one silver bullet here.
Of course.
But the point, and to go back to something that you, that you referred to earlier. If the University of Rhode Island was to construct net twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred new beds on campus over, let's say, a ten-year period of time, and if the town and the university and the state could get behind such a program, what impact would that have on the market in Narragansett? My guess is, those houses that are currently rented to students or some, not all of them, but it would take a significant number of houses that are, that are currently rented to students and make them available for either families or you, you pick the, you pick the case. So as you're thinking about this from a policy point of view, you gotta, you gotta kind of take into consideration, is six to eight thousand the right number? What impact is that having on, on cost of housing, on infrastructure, on what you, on our school system? In terms of enrollment in the school system, you go right down the line and say, is that the right number or not? And if not, does this play a role in impacting that? What role do we, you know, what do we do with, what do we do with the University of Rhode Island? If you look at, you are, I mean, Alex, if you go to URI's website and you look at the master planning process that they're going through right now.
Yeah, the, he actually shared it with us. President Perlange.
Yeah, okay, so. In their December report, they're saying, what, they did their stakeholder analysis and they said, and they're summarizing and saying, what have we heard about housing? Says, "Our challenges are, the quality and limited availability of housing options on or near campus was identified as the number one issue impacting the student experience and the growth of academic programs. Deferring enrollment, particularly among higher achieving and higher resource students who have more alternative options and limiting enrollment in international graduate students who are more reliant, reliant on, in on year-round housing availability. There were also reports of students leaving URI due to the lack of housing options for upperclassmen and undergraduate students. Long commutes for students and employees living further out from campus. This results in students finding it challenging to make it to campus for classes and being less engaged on campus activities." Opportunities. In, URI is currently considering the process of developing graduate student housing through P3. So they're going to graduate, if they, if they're able to, if they're able to, so this isn't us, this is the university doing its own analysis. If you look at their, if you look at their, their, their game plan, their master plan for building housing on campus, through, as we, as Mark mentioned earlier, through two thousand and thirty-nine, net add new beds, seven hundred and, little over seven hundred. I've got the information here, I'll pass, you know, I'll give you, everyone can have a copy before they leave. The, the P3 that they're building right now, basically, that will add beds so that they can decant a bunch of dormitories that now need to be renovated because you've seen the, the quality of the housing stock up there. So as, as you think through, from a policy perspective, what you're doing, you gotta put it in perspective. What can we do? What are they doing? How do we put it together? And what role does something like this play in the efforts to move forward?
Right, and I agree. And it's one thing that I, and I appreciate you sharing all of that information at this meeting. The point I'm just trying to make here as well is that this, this goes beyond just this ordinance. That we need to have more conversations and cooperation with the state, with the University of Rhode Island. I actually, and maybe I'm just thinking a glass half-empty quite a lot these days, but for me, I, I don't think that building just dormitories is going to solve the problem. I think that lowering the cost of, of living on campus would help to better retain students on campus overall. I think people are resorting to going out into the communities and neighboring towns because it's cheaper to live out there, even though nothing's cheap today. But it's, in many ways, it's cheaper. They value the independence. But there is a lot of values that students and anyone who's going to the University of Rhode Island or any college, you know, would rather see by living off-campus rather than being on-campus. And one of those conversations that I think, again, is, is overdue here is, you know, how can we work together to support each other? It's very relevant that students are a vibrant part of our community. You heard from Solicitor Craven that he used to rent in Bonnet as a student. In fact, I would go so far as to add an argument that, uh, uh, there's a lot of residents that currently live here in Narragansett that in one shape or form rented here as a student. They met their significant others. And again, I, I'm not trying to say that everything that you mentioned is a problem and it needs to be addressed. And I agree. But when it comes to this one particular ordinance, it's just a matter of how we go about interpreting it and applying it and then working in addition to address a lot of those other root cause problems.
Again, I'll just return, just, and I'll say it one more time. From a policy perspective, you need to think about six thousand, eight thousand University of Rhode Island students. You can provide affordable housing for university students, or you can provide affordable housing for a group of other folks as well. Taking two thousand, taking a couple thousand students that are currently in Narragansett, having them back on campus or in South Kingston closer to campus is not necessarily, is not, is not necessarily a bad idea, Alex.
And again, and I understand the whole, like, we can just push this group of people back to the campus. But how about instead of affordable housing for six to eight thousand students, affordable housing for all here in Narragansett? I, I am totally and very much aware of the students that are living here in town. But there's a lot of conflict when it comes to enforcement and being able to say, you know, and again, these are six to eight thousand individuals who could live in other cities and towns. But how do we, you know, discriminate against different groups who want to come and rent in this town? I don't think it's a student.
You don't.
Versus unrelated. I think it's a market issue and the number of rentals that we have here in this town.
Couldn't agree with you more. And, and no one is looking, I guess what I'm saying is, if the, if the product on campus had two thousand to three thousand more beds, based on what they're telling us in their report, more students want to live on campus. Right? So if they're telling us that, and to your point, they can get the product right with respect to its cost. And it's a.
No, I'm, I'm gonna get.
And it's amenities.
This moved on.
Right. Then you have essentially provided a safe, you basically have released X number of units here that are available for some other community. It's not forcing anybody else. It's having the university build an attractive product and a, and a, and a product that's priced right.
Can I ask Rupert to put in some?
Oh, yeah.
Because everybody here has really worked hard to try to help you folks.
Thank you.
We want to give you information. We know this is not going to be easy.
No, I appreciate it. I've, I've added, I've asked a lot of questions and you guys have done great, so appreciate it.
So, I guess. I've been thinking about this for a long time. When the three-student ordinance was adopted, from my perspective, it codified what I understand was the tradition of student housing in Narragansett. When Councilmember Durkin and I and Solicitor Craven were in school, the owners of summer cottages in the town's summer colonies wanted to, sometimes three-bedroom cottages rented to students during the year. At that time, I, I think it was very rare for a four- or five-bedroom house to be rented to students. So I think, I think the three-student ordinance, I can't, I can't speak to the legality of it. Looking at it from a policy perspective, but I think, I think in effect codified what was, what was the tradition that started. I think we talk about the number of students living in town. If you had, so you take, we have about two thousand rental properties. If you put three students per property.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven hundred. Well, going with two thousand, you'd have six thousand students. Assuming some of the seven hundred are rented year-round maybe. And that's, that's thirty-five percent of the twenty-twenty-five total enrollment at the university. And it's more students that are housed on campus and way more students that are housed in South Kingstown off-campus. And I think the rental, the rental situation, it causes an affordability issue in two ways. It causes a, a, an affordability for people that are trying to rent a house and, and for the folks that are trying to buy a house. And as I think you know, student rentals are rented by the bedroom. So about a thousand dollars a year. I don't know if that's this year's rate, last year's rate.
Yeah, but based on state stats.
And, and I think it's ironic that larger houses are not more affordable for students, which normally would be the case in, in other communities where they're not rented by the bedroom. But, so three students, you have three thousand dollars a month rent. And I think some families can afford three hundred, three thousand dollars a month rent. Four students, four thousand dollars a month rent. Five students, five thousand dollars a month rent. I don't think there are many families that can afford to rent a house at that rate. So, so these costs, I think, aren't affordable to families. And then the rental values, as, as we've talked about, really drive the sales price of houses that make it unaffordable for families who want to live here. The comp plan calls for reducing the impact of students, student renters, on the quality of life in neighborhoods. It was a major issue in community forums, developing the comprehensive plan. It was such a major issue that the second round of community forums, the questions were framed, aside from student noise issues, student rental issues, what are the issues? So that the discussion went beyond student rental issues. I believe the town should accommodate student renters so that they blend seamlessly into neighborhoods. In my, in my experience in my neighborhood, when you have two or three students in a house, you don't even know they're there. When you have four and five students in a house, they do impact the quality of life in the neighborhood. And, and I know folks that have moved out of town because of the impact of student renters on the quality of the neighborhood and the quality of life. And I know folks that lived in part of town, moved to a different part of town to get away from the student rentals, and now they're permeating all the neighborhoods. So they, like you, I was knocking on doors running for office. And I had folks that were very concerned that what they moved away from was moving into their neighborhood again. So, I mean, let's, let's face it, student lifestyle, student schedules, we all were students. It's different than family lifestyle and family schedules. And, and yeah, one thing's parties, but it's another thing, people coming and going at midnight, one o'clock, yelling, "Hey, see you later," to their friends, car alarms going off. I mean, that disrupts the quality of life for families, for people that have to get up and work the next morning. And I think, I think that's the kind of impact that, I think it's a density issue. So that's, that's why historically I've always supported the three-student ordinance. I, I can't speak to the legalities of how this relates to the unrelated. I think the way the unrelated ordinance, the unrelated state law is written, I think it's, I think it's convoluted. I probably, I think it probably could be challenged on its face, just the unrelated definition. But, but I think the student issue, I think it's, I think it's a policy issue, a policy decision. And how it gets addressed, I mean, as Mr. Craven said, you know, issues such as parking may be the way to address it. But anyhow.
Thank you.
Doc?
Yeah, just a few words. First of all, most of the people in this room have been students for many years. And I sort of. And I sort of personally resent the business of the students word, you know. I was a student for 25 years. I'm still a student because I study every night. But, but the, so the unrelated word, I think, is more appropriate when we're talking about this subject. Because, you know, people roll in from Jersey and New York and whatever every summer, and they're not necessarily students, right? To make, make the problem, but the problem, dwelling, not to be repetitious, but I am. Three, four, five isn't the issue. If you have one party person with the internet today, they can have a party every week. The, the issue is enforcement. How, how do you explain to people in this community, you can't act that way? And do it without a heavy hand or a, I don't know, being, being mean, obnoxious, or even violent. There's got to be a way to enforce it because that's really what, and, and I think Rupert just touched on it. That's what bothers people in neighbor, I have family who lives, who lives in other parts of town. Somebody, after one of our planning board meetings, said to me, "We all know the house down the street with the nine or 10 cars." We all know that. Why isn't this corrected? Because there's noise, the police go there and it becomes quiet for 10 minutes, and then the noise comes back. And I, I think it's, I think we should have a clear policy. I don't disagree with that. But I don't think that's the issue to the, to the average homeowner here. Average homeowner would like that 5%, maybe it's 10%. I, I hope it's 5% or less who disrupt the community.
Can I say something?
Oh, as long as Dr. O'Neill is.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, I'd like to hear your follow-up on it because I just, I, I, I've been on a planning board a long time. We've been talking about this issue forever. But I don't think the, the number isn't the issue. And I think we, we really spend a lot of time talking about that number. But how do we correct the behavior of that 5%? To, to stop the disruption in neighborhoods? And then there are long-term issues about numbers and what happens to housing and all that stuff. In any case, that's.
Dr. O'Neill, I agree with you 100%. And, and I just want to add that, you know, education as a teacher, education and educating, you know, the students about what it's like, what should be proper behavior within a community is really important. And I think I went this past week to welcome the athletic students from URI. And we talked to them. We talked to all the new students and all the athletes and told them, you know, for those of you who are going to be living off-campus, you're part of the community, you are leaders, people look to you as role models. We need for you, you know, to be the role models within the community. We had that conversation with them. Then I went on down to the beach and spoke to all the kids at the Greek Life who were there and just kind of said the same thing to them. You know, you guys are leaders, you need to be able to let everybody know. One of the things I talked to Ellen Reynolds about is doing some type of community event within the community so that the residents can get to know the students. I think if we do a lot more of that, and, and students, there's a lot of them here today. And, and I think, you know, they're here today and, and they're hearing what we're saying. And they're hearing that a lot of the concern is because of some of the problems that are being in the community. And so I would love for them to take back the message to everyone they know who's living in one of the houses, that, you know, be respectful of your neighbors and your neighbors will be very respectful of you. Get to know your neighbors. I know that for a fact, there's things being posted. I think Greek Life, who has, I forgot how many thousands of followers, they're, they posted the, the poster that came out with stopping for school buses, how, when is appropriate to stop. So we're trying to do things to educate the students. It, I think it's something that has to be done. We also, as President Menzies said, we're meeting with URI. So we're taking those, we're taking those kinds of things and trying to bring it and work with the university, and they have been so receptive to it. And so they're willing to work with us and to educate the kids. Because quite honestly, for some of these kids, sorry, guys, it's the first time they're out on their own. And I think it's sometimes that they don't realize that, you know what? When you slam your car door and say, "Hey, see you later," at 1:00 in the morning, that there might be a little kid living next to you who has to go to school. And that little kid has to get up in the morning to go to class and go to school. And I, sometimes you just don't think of it. And so I think they need to be told those things. And, you know, as a high school teacher, sometimes you got to tell them a lot of times before they get it, you know? But I think working and doing those types of things, I think you're absolutely 100% correct. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Steve?
If you guys mind if I jump in? I, I agree with all of you. And as the person who was a problem renter when I went to URI, I can tell you I was a problem. I was alone, I was a problem when there was three of us. I was a problem. I also know nobody ever came and talked to me as a neighbor. I go talk to my college renter neighbors every year. I know Mark used to do the same. We talked about it just this weekend. I think that'll go a long way. But to bring us back to the reason we're here, Nick, if you could just read that first line of the, the state law for me again, because I have a different take than.
Sure. A person or group of unrelated, this relates to a group of unrelated folks living together. The maximum number may be set by local ordinance, but this maximum shall not be less than one person per bedroom and shall not exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling.
Thank you very much. So that sentence right there says what we're allowed to do as a town and as a government, not what private citizens are allowed to do. So you can rent to one person. If you have a five-bedroom, that's your property, you can disseminate it as you like. So that's not part of it. What's part of it is how are we allowed to govern it? And it sounds like if every house in town was a three-bedroom, this ordinance would be fine. But they're not. There are four bedrooms, there are five bedrooms, there are eight bedrooms. Obviously, nobody wants an eight-bedroom on a 10,000-square-foot lot, which is why they stopped us being able to build those. And now we have special use permits. We talked about that. I think that's great for more than four bedrooms. But there are four and five bedrooms now, which are very clearly, if we tell those people, "You can only have three people," we're in violation of what that state law says. So in the interest of not getting sued, I do like the town's idea for an ordinance where it's one per bedroom, maximum of five. And maybe we should workshop that to a maximum of one per bedroom with a maximum of five as well. That way, a three-bedroom is just for three, a two-bedroom is just for two. I totally, I mean, you know, if you want to live four people in a bedroom, I don't think that's my business, but I'm in the minority there and I can concede that point. So that might be a meaningful change that we can all agree on. But that's all I got.
I'd just like to close, and I, I thank you. I'm watching you all take some notes, so if I can throw some other stuff out at you.
Can I just say a couple of things real quick, Mark?
Excuse me?
Can I just say a couple of things real quick?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just before you close.
I just wanted, well, I just wanted to finish up so it goes back to you guys completely clean.
He might have a question.
Yeah, no problem.
I just have a couple of things I want to say. One, I agree with the president about the unfairness of having two different ordinances, almost, almost like demonizing these URI students who shouldn't be demonized. They, they, I have met many of them. They live all around me. They're wonderful human beings. Are there bad eggs? Of course there are. But there are bad residence eggs as well. So like, you, you deal with that as you, as you deal with that. Agreed enforcement can be a better thing, certainly. But I think we've seen in these years, I mean, we relate back to that big party that we all know about back in 10 years ago. I mean, that's what we really talk about all the time. Those types of issues, Mr. Tierney, those type of issues don't happen that much anymore, correct?
They've definitely been reduced since then, yes.
Right. So like, we have been better at enforcing. And I truly believe that one-bedroom, I think that's what I meant with, when we passed the ADUs, I thought that's what we were going for, was one-bedroom, one, one person unrelated per bedroom up to five bedrooms. That's what I believe we were shooting for. I thought we did that. That's what I would like to see with this. And I think we should move forward with this. I think the easiest thing to do is just to get, to unify these laws together so we can just move forward. And also, I know there are, you want 2,500 to 3,500 new units at URI, and I agree with that. They should. But it's not going to happen overnight. So I, I don't, but I don't want to shut out the students now from that either. So like, I would advocate for having URI build more units for us, certainly. And I'm all about that. I've been to meetings, I've been to state senate meetings, I'm all about that. But like, again, that's going to happen 10 years down the line, right? So I would like to see, I would like to see that happen, but I'm also not interested in shutting students out of our, of our neighborhoods right now.
Didn't suggest that we were shutting students out. Even if you bought, even if you built that number of beds, there would still be a significant presence of students here in Narragansett. And the question is, what's the balance? I, just, I have one specific thing with regard to this ordinance that you all should consider. This ordinance explicitly excludes R-40 and R-80 zones from, from the provisions in the ordinance. There are R-80 and R, there are neighborhoods in the R-80 and the R-40 zones where there are, there are significant numbers of rental units. It's not clear to me, and those, and at least a couple of these neighborhoods, we're talking about very small lots in pretty dense neighborhoods. So the question is, not sure why they were exempted. I wasn't on the planning board at that time, the 40 and the 80s. But the 40s and the 80s deserve the same protection that any other neighborhood's going to get in this ordinance.
Thank you. And before you close, I just want to ask Counselor Tori Alday, who came in late. I just, I didn't even see you down there. I've been looking on this side.
He's had his head down.
Do you have, do you have any other comments or questions I want to just?
Quite, quite a few questions. I've done a lot of listening. Okay, Mr. Chair and really planning board. Thank you for everything tonight. Appreciate your presentations and your diligent answers. Mark, you had mentioned that there were 783 four-bedroom houses?
Yeah, based on the database that I could find, there's 783 four.
Four and up?
Four and up.
Four and up.
That are on the rentals, 1,917 three-bedrooms.
I'm sorry, how many?
1,917 three-bedrooms. And based on the numbers from the university and what I can confirm from the town, right now, we house 1/3 of URI's total population, including their graduate school. And if you look at the number of students on, versus campus undergraduate, we, we house 56.67% to 68.20% because you get the 6,000 to 8,000. And I've tried to find a hard number, and I still keep coming up with 6,000 to 8,000. So we're somewhere between 56% and 68% of URI's population lives here. We house more than the university does. And, you know, I agree with you. I don't, I don't see it changing anytime soon, even if they want to. The cost of doing it, URI is handcuffed because they can't use, and, and our legislative connection will tell you, they can't just use funds to do it. They have to float bonds. They can't take it out of their operating cost. I don't know if they can get appropriations from the state to do it. But, you know, the state's thin as it can be. So to think that things are going to happen quickly, I don't think any of us see that, any of us see that.
And I definitely agree with you there. A three-student ordinance restricting three students to one particular house, would this not thrust the student population onto more houses in town? Of those 783 four and up?
I, I've looked everywhere and I've looked at other cities, especially big college towns and stuff. And I've actually called people. And they said, "Yeah, you know, that seems to be something people bring up all the time, but there's no data that proves that, that if you concentrate students in one, one house, it's going to eliminate from others." And then they, they said the question then becomes is, okay, what neighborhoods are you going to choose to say, "Well, we're kind of writing you off. We're going to locate all the kids here so that everybody else can live easy and breathe." So it's, it's one of those things where there's, I could find no data. People that look at this for a living can't find any data on it. And most are skeptical of that thought process. But I don't have anything statistical to give you because I couldn't find anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to jump in there because we've actually had people come and testify that after this went into effect the first time, there were a lot of year-round renters that tried to convert to seasonal because they saw more profit in it because of that extra demand that got diffused through the. I don't have data either, this is anecdotal. But I've talked to the three biggest, you know, brokerages, realtors in town. They have 5% to 10% of their student rentals that go unrented every year anyway. So we're, we're getting close to meeting that demand. But if you cut out 700 people, they're going to rent somewhere else. Because if you're an adult, you don't want three babysitters. I talked to you about this this weekend. I'd like to see them put a bar back on campus, but I'm not URI and I can't make them do it, so.
The, the other thing that I did come back with from people was that if you, the, the areas, communities that had allowed for larger number of students in a building saw a greater influx of investment because of the, the nature. And the, the sites that I went to and I made some phone calls, and some people actually were willing to talk to a degree, is that they say, "Well, that is an indication of a lucrative market. And yes, we tell our people that's where you need to invest." So it's just a, it's, it's not a good or bad. I'm just saying it's, it's a dynamic. And if you look at, at the housing, and God, I look at it every week, the U.S. housing is, is down below 1% growth. It is almost, it's, it's at .5. Average house is now, is dropped, it's 3,000, 369,000. Rhode Island, Rhode Island is, housing market is only up 4.8%, 4.2%. And it's at 495,000. We are still up 10.4%. And we're at 841, 721 for average, and the median is 757. So, you know, it's still going up. It's frightening. And, and you look at it, you know, as, as the chair pointed out, rightfully so, students on average, and I looked at big cities, rural, like, communities and different types of campus scenarios. Students moving off-campus save annually $5,900 to $11,000 a year, which is sizable. The interesting part that I found was that students contribute, and this is Rhode Island numbers, if you had, based on the per, I looked at the money spent by students in a community that stayed in the community. So, and then I looked at four, a, a, a family of four, two parents and two children. I took out rent because both are going to have to pay rent. And the dynamics we now have, I went to school, my first weekend was a disaster. We learned real quick. But our landlord, Charlie, lived in Pawtucket. He would drive down every two weeks to mow the lawn, even in the dead of winter. He'd have a couple beers, I think, got away from his wife. But he'd take a look at the house casually, he'd take a look down the street. We now have more investors. We have less people that are Narragansett and less people that are local. And we have a lot of out-of-state investments. The other changing dynamic, since us old ones, I'll leave you out, Steve, were here, is when our day, you didn't even start thinking about moving off-campus. Maybe your junior year, but you didn't even think about it until your senior year. You now have freshmen and sophomores moving out and, and living down the line. So you have maybe a less mature group of people with investors who maybe aren't invested in the community. But I did a breakout, and, and a house of five students will contribute annually $26,390 to the local community. A family of four, and again, I took out rents, I took out taxes. And this, a family of four didn't include things like sports, you know, clubs, Boy Scouts, and things like that. And I also took out daycare, which in Rhode Island for two children averages $21,000. A family of four contributes $51,562 directly into the local economy. That's more than twice what five students would do. So those are dynamics that we're looking at too, that it just, you know, how do you balance all this? How do you slow the train down? And again, it's, it's policy, and it's, it's not going to be easy, guys, and I don't envy you. Because I wish I had a magic wand and told you, "Well, that's just a number. And if you do this, everything goes boom." It doesn't. It doesn't. The other thing that, you know, we talked about, and again, not lecturing you, but Thomas brought up, he's the policy guy here. You know, when you, when you start to look at policies, what do you need to look at? You need to look at your vision, you need practicality, parking, traffic, the, our present infrastructure, police, fire, all of those demands. The other thing you need to look at. The other thing you need to look at, if you're looking at unrelated and you're spreading it over, what is the impact on our summer rentals? Because, you know, when you read the state law, and I even laugh, but I use it as a hyperbole for an example, if I have a one-bedroom house conceivably under state law, I can put five people in there. And I will tell you right now, who's going to, who's going to put five students in a one-bedroom house? I got to tell you, you know, my kids are 30 and 33 years old, they're doing, they're all getting married now. They jammed 12 guys into an apartment, into a hotel room. You know, they don't care.
I won't say anything.
So, yeah, so, so again, this is one of those, and Donna, you know, hit one, these are one of those things where we create a solution, because we're focused on students, well, what's the problem that happens? Where the dominoes fall from there? So we need to also look at that. So, again, we've tried to give you information wherever we could, it's there, it's hard to find, guys, I'm telling you, it's not easy. I've been working on this for over a month and a half, just about full-time, trying to figure out accurate data, not, not just pull-it-out-type stuff, so. And I've watched you guys all write vigorously, so. Does that help with some of your questions?
It does somewhat. Thank you, Mark. So a question now for solicitors. We kind of control the, we do control the rental registration process here in Narrows and Gansett. A landlord or homeowner applies, what is the legality of setting a set number of permits that can be applied for?
I just want to make sure that we're, I do think, and I love the question, I just want to make sure that we're sticking to the student ordinance specifically. Because that is another, that is another workshop to be had, I think, in general, the short-term rental workshops, which is a huge, long list of things that need to be addressed that could be addressed at that time, but it's up to the solicitors if they want.
You're right, Alex, I don't want to run afoul of open meetings. Ryan, email, email myself, Attorney Craven, James Callahan, we can, we can talk about it.
I'd be curious of that, too. Just from a policy standpoint?
Sure, we could circulate it.
Thanks.
Everybody in.
But it's a great question.
It is a great question.
Just given the discussion earlier surrounding the market.
No, it's a good question.
I think that would be prescient.
Yeah.
Okay. With regards to orange sticker policy, Jim, how many stickers have been issued this year?
Those numbers available right now, I'd have to meet with the police chief on that.
Okay. Then...
They are down, though.
They're down?
Yes.
Then perhaps a question for both you and our building inspector, how many employees are responsible for rental enforcement?
We have two part-time code enforcement people that, they don't just do the rentals, they do other things. We have a clerk that works, that runs the rental program, and we have another one that assists when needed.
Okay. And is this enough to keep up with the current demand?
I think it all depends on what the council does with short-term rentals, the status of the student-occupied dwelling and the unrelated, and I think how those are drafted could impact the staffing, that is correct.
Okay. So if we were to, nah, I won't...
If I could help?
Yeah.
Because I'm getting PTSD, thinking back to all the stuff that we went through. One of the things that a number of us on the board really were vehement about is the enforcement. We don't give our enforcement people any tools to work with. One of the recommendations we had was to have a registration database. We have landlords register, but one of the things that we felt was that anybody, the people that are on that contract, their names, addresses, contact information, and registrations should be registered. That way, when an officer comes or any other medical emergency comes and says, who lives in this house? You know, or there's five cars in there, it's like, yeah, we just have, well, no, these are the people that live here. Because right now, all they do is say, well, you know, none of us or all of us or whatever, and they just shut the door, and there's really nothing these guys can do. And unless you have that arm of it in place, you can put anything you want in, it's just superfluous, because unless you can enforce what you want to do, what you're doing is useless.
Can I just jump in for a point of clarification, maybe the solicitors know about that? It's been a long time since I got an orange sticker, but I did get one. And when I got one, we had to have our lease posted by the door with the names for the police to reference, I don't know if that's still happening?
That's still there in the ordinance.
Okay, so we do, when the police come, they have to know who's in there. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to all the landlords, you got to post your lease, do it right.
But when you talk to law enforcement, most of the times, they get, they get stopped with Stonewall. And so, but if they had something that they have in possession before they leave the station or is sent over to them while they're en route with the tenants, all their confirmation registrations and things like that, that gives them a tool to work with. So it's difficult.
I have a question for the solicitors also. I know that there are some people who have really great leases with these kids, and they make them sign really good leases. And then there's the people who are just, here you go, here's the key. Is, can we as a town develop a lease that's used town-wide, or is that not, I mean, minus money? I mean, they could choose, charge whatever they want, but as far as a lease goes, and what's required of them, is that something that we can do, or is that not acceptable?
My concern would be subject to Bob yelling at me across the room here. I think then you're infringing on folks' right to contract your, it's an arrangement between private parties. Now, that's not to say that there aren't town ordinances that can govern what goes into those contracts, you have to be consistent with law in your contracts, but parties have a right to contract, and municipalities generally can't encroach upon that.
Donna, I think, to support your position, I think even more so, and I'm not going to name names, but there are a couple of rental companies who are very, very good with their tenants about saying, this is this, they check up on them. We've had situations, because I have students on either side of me, and have great relationships, some have adopted us as parents and stuff, but, who have actually come and said, hey, how's everything going? And like, who are you? And, you know, so again, you're right. Unfortunately, and getting back to Steve, you know, having too many parents, it used to be where the landlords would come down just to drop in, and we don't have that. So who's trying to do that? You know, I'm a retired teacher, unfortunately, we have a lot of families that are not as tight as they used to be. So teachers are maintaining the role of parents. You have some very good, and I, I don't want to get into legal issues with myself, I wish I could name them, but there are some property management companies here that are fabulous, and they do the job above and beyond. And they respond to the kids, because a lot of them, I shouldn't say that, some of them don't. Kid has a toilet, so, they don't come, they don't respond. And then those kids start to care, they just don't care anymore. It's like, fine, you guys don't care about me. It's, it's, it's a complicated issue.
No, I agree.
To your point, you may not, you may not want or should have the town craft a lease, you may want to have an organization of landlords develop a model lease, you may want to use your influence to have that, that happen.
Sorry, develop a what?
A model lease.
A model lease, thank you.
That has provisions that are deemed to be best-practiced.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I might think that's a great idea, except for, I think it would come back to what you were saying, there's still the privacy of the contract involved.
But I don't think you're forcing people into that contract. It would be, if it were posted on the website, it would be a suggested lease, and what would be the legality regarding that? Fine?
It's suggested, it's not binding, yes.
Yeah, but if the industry is policing itself, you're going to get more compliance than you would normally. You're not going to get as much pushback, especially if they have input into what goes into those, and it seems fair and equitable.
And again, I, I love this conversation.
You guys got to go to work.
I just want to make sure that it's, just, we keep to the topic at hand, just specific to the three-student. And did you have any other questions?
I have one final question for our solicitors.
And then we'll hand it back to you for your final thoughts.
You can check me if it's relevant or not. But how defiant of state law would be in recrafting this ordinance or whatever, no more than one unrelated per bedroom up to five be? How defiant would that be? I mean, as it stands and as you've read a couple of times, it's no less than one...
That is presently the town's adoption of...
I don't think that's defiant of state law at all, I mean, that's consistent, catching me on the spot, Ryan, but I think that's consistent with state law. That would be no less than one per bedroom and no more than five unrelated per dwelling. I think that's, if I'm understanding your question correctly, that's consistent with state law.
State law says no less than one per bedroom, I'm saying no more than one per bedroom, unrelated.
So in other words, you're saying one per bedroom?
Yes.
You can do that.
That's intent, I think that was the intent of the law. Bob, you can say it, I think that was the intent of the law, how it got worded that way. And when you, when you adopted, it would be consistent with the town's own unrelated statute, you adopted no more than one, because you saw the value in that, so.
Okay. No further questions, thank you.
Great.
And then, I don't know, Solicitor Craven, did you have any response to that, or are you good with that?
I agree.
Okay.
Both hats.
Thank you. So before I share my final thoughts, I want to allow the planning board to share their final thoughts as well.
Tom, anything? Rupert?
Just, just one more point. I don't think we have any control over this, but in the past 20 years, the university has increased enrollment by 30%. So that's, that's driving...
Sorry, how much?
30%. That's undergraduate enrollment. So that's driving this issue. And so I think your discussions with the university, and I know they're aiming, as Tom mentioned, in their strategic plan toward graduate students, graduate students need year-round housing. Every other university community where I've worked, students have year-round leases, they don't have nine-month leases. So I think that's a different situation than we have here that is unique.
Yeah, for those of you who don't know that, like, my kids, the schools they went to, I had to sign a 12-month, they had to sign a 12-month lease, whether they lived there or not. So it's very different, we don't have the dynamics of short-term rentals and stuff like that in most college towns. It's a 12-month lease, whether the kid lives there or not, the landlord doesn't care. So, so they have somebody who's there for a year, and so the consequences of their actions can, can catch up with them, and they tend to, so.
Anyone else on this side?
Steve?
Joe?
I'm good.
I want to thank you all. My takeaway points, again, I think to echo some of the sentiments that have been shared this evening, particularly by Dr. O'Neill, was we really have to look at it from an enforcement lens, how can we better educate all renters in our community of what's right and what's wrong, and residents at the same time? How can we figure out ways in which we can better interact with our neighbor and treat each other with respect and address our very, our ongoing infrastructure problem? There's a lot of different layers and nuances that go above and beyond this three-student ordinance, and I look forward to your partnership as we work together to address these issues.
My pleasure, thank you for having us.
Appreciate the conversation, the dialogue, and everyone that's come in attendance.
You're the best.